All right, we are live streaming, Chair.
All right. Good morning, everyone. This is Wednesday, December 29th, and it is the 10 o'clock regular meeting of the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners. We are meeting virtually. We are being recorded and we are being transmitted live on YouTube. First item on our agenda is to call the meeting to order, which I have now done. Next item is to establish a quorum. We have all three commissioners present, which does constitute a quorum. Next item on the agenda would be recognition. We've got three employees that we'd like to recognize. I guess maybe the end of the year. This is the Lincoln County Academy Awards portion of the agenda. First person we'd like to recognize is Lincoln County Sheriff Curtis Landers. Curtis received recognition. There you are, Sheriff. Welcome. Sheriff received recognition at the Oregon State Sheriff's Association, O S S A, meeting that was held earlier this month in Bend. And Sheriff Landers was recognized as the Sheriff of the Year. The recipient of this award is selected by O S S A Awards Committee based upon his or her participation and contributions toward O S S A objectives and efforts in the current year. The award signifies exemplary service. This award is not issued every year if the nominating committee does not believe it is clearly justified. Landers was selected for working diligently to elevate the experience for attendees at O S S A special events, including this year's award ceremony. So it should also be recognized that the sheriff received the O S S A President's Special Award, Special Recognition Award, and he's also been nominated to the Vice President's seat of the O S S A for the coming year. So lots of recognition, Sheriff. Appreciate the hard work and well deserved. Anything you'd like to share?
Just thank you very much, Commissioners. I really appreciate it. You know, I'm very honored. It was a surprise, but couldn't have done it without your support, support of our team. So I just thank, thank everyone for, for that. And again, very honored to represent Lincoln County.
Well, as I said, I think it was a Lincoln County Awards Night, so good work and again, thank you for your dedication and service to our citizens. Any other comments or we'll move on? Mr. Chair. Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Hall.
I'll just echo everything you said and also, you know, just point out one of the many dimensions of Sheriff Flanders' leadership that I particularly admire. Well, actually, a couple, maybe. His, one would be his commitment to continuous improvement in all phases of the sheriff's office operations. And maybe it goes hand, this goes hand in hand with that, but his willingness and even eagerness to innovate, look at, you know, successful programs, projects, solutions that have been tried in a few other communities and evaluate them if they fit here and in some cases bring them to Lincoln County. So here, here, well deserved recognition.
Well said. Commissioner Jacobson?
Yeah. Yeah, I would just add a couple of things. One is a thank you to his wife Jennifer for posting it on social media, or I would not have heard out, heard about it. So thanks Jennifer for letting us know that way. And I agree with the sentiments that both Commissioner Hall and Commissioner Hunt have said.
All right. Again, congratulations and appreciate the hard dedication and service to our citizens. Thank you. Sheriff Landers.
Thank you very much. And actually, my wife was actually in on the whole thing and knew about it before I even did.
Oh, those wives, they're sneaky at times, aren't they?
Thank you.
Again, congratulations. All right, we'll move on. Our second recognition is the Oregon State Sheriff's Association Emergency Manager of the Year, and that is our own Jenny Damaris. I don't believe she is present unless Mr., or is that?
That's true, Chair. She, she couldn't.
She couldn't miss. So unfortunately, she was unable to be here today.
All right. But we will still recognize Ms. Damaris as the Emergency Manager of the Year. She was recognized during the annual Oregon State Sheriff's Association, O S S A, Winter Conference held in Bend, same event where Sheriff Landers received his recognition. I'll quote from the nomination by her peers, that Damaris was recognized for her, quote, "dedication to the profession and to the success of fellow emergency managers." So again, she was recognized for her active involvement in the COVID-ECHO Mountain Fire Complex responses, personal protection, equipment managing, management, communications, planning, exercises, and training. So the, again, this is a recognition Ms. Damaris received at the O S S A conference in, in Bend. So again, well done and good work and great representation for Lincoln County. Any comments from Commissioners?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Commissioner. Commissioner Jacobson, I'll make the executive decision here.
I was just gonna say that, you know, I think 2020 and even 2021 was years that emergency managers diligently plan and train for. And I think all of Jenny's planning and training certainly showed off for us during those, these last two years. So just a big thank you to her.
Commissioner Hall.
Well, those are great sentiments along the line of what I was thinking of. You know, certainly Jenny has been an important part of the COVID response team, but you know, in I'm sure there are future challenges ahead, but I wouldn't be surprised if many years from now Jenny and those she works with and are close to will look back on the Echo Mountain Fire aftermath as her most challenging hour and her finest hour and really glad she is part of the sheriff's team and the Lincoln County team.
Well, I guess great minds think alike. I certainly would echo both those comments. And again, it's been a challenging year, but Ms. Damaris proved herself to be an effective leader during these challenging times. So again, appreciate the dedication and service to our citizens and job well done. All right, if there's no further comments on that, our last recognition goes to, well, it's really, I guess, a bifurcated recognition. It recognizes the Director of our Finance Department as well as her staff. Director Shear is present. She is the Director of our Finance Department. And as Chair, I received a letter on December 23rd stating that the Government Finance Officers Association was pleased to notify us that the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report for the Fiscal Year ended June 30, 2020 qualifies for the GFAO Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. The Certificate of Achievement is the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by government and its management. The award of financial reporting and achievement is presented to, is also presented to the individual. So that would be to our Director or the department designated by the government. So recognition to both Director Shear and her staff. I believe I'm gonna miss, but I think this is what, 29, 31 years of consecutive awards? Director Shear, can you correct me?
I honestly, I can't. All I know is that it is a decades-long string of achievement, and it really represents the hard work of the finance staff in particular and the department heads that cooperate in getting our annual audit and financial report done in a timely manner.
And I would say that probably the, the general public doesn't realize that this, to get this award, it really requires a substantial amount of additional work and data that is reflected in our financial report. So it requires Director Shear and her staff to really go the extra mile to compile data that isn't necessarily required as part of the audit expectations for the county. So some extra work, but again, a reflection of the quality and the caliber of the financial reports that the county generates. And as a numbers guy, I can tell you that's near and dear to my heart. And without money, it's difficult to do much more. So any last comments, Director Shear?
I know, just again, a big shout out to my staff. They worked really hard to get this accomplishment.
And I would, I'll try to identify them. You've got Deanna Gravel, you've got Diana, you've got Jean, you've got Ann. Who'd I miss?
I know, that's, that's pretty much the team.
All right, well.
But there are also significant, you know, contributions by HHS staff, DA staff, there, there, anyone that has a significant amount of federal funds also has a huge role in this.
Yep. Well said. Commissioners, comments?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Hall.
A few thoughts. First, I think it would be nice if we acknowledged the late Commissioner Don Lindley, who very early in his long tenure of service became aware of the importance of this report and Certificate of Achievement and really was the, I think, the advocate or catalyst for it becoming a priority for the county. And you alluded to the fact that a lot of extra work goes into the steps to earn this award, and that is very true. But you know, the ultimate end is not having another plaque to hang on our wall, which, whether it's 29th or 31st, but greater transparency and accountability to the public. In addition to our yearly budget document, our yearly report to the GFOA is also posted online on the county website, and people call for more government transparency and rightly so. And I really believe us that this is part of our larger commitment to conduct government's business to the largest extent possible in public. Thank you.
Well said. Commissioner Jacobson?
Yeah, just a big thank you. I know it's been a difficult year for you and your team as well. So just a thank you for everything you have done this last year, two years, really, for us and, and the big thanks.
And again, thank you, and please share our appreciation with your staff. Job well done. All right, we will move on in our agenda, and next would be the adoption of the consent calendar. These are items of a routine nature or items that have come before the board previously. If a commissioner or staff member wishes to highlight an item at this time, they may do so. Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the consent calendar as presented.
Mr. Chair, I would so, so move.
I will second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Thank you. Next, we'll move on. We have several decision action items on this agenda. This is the last meeting of the year. And first would be the Lincoln County Fee Schedule. Sorry, I had to look at my agenda and changes for 2022. Again, this is an item that came before us at our last meeting, which was two weeks ago. Anything that Council Yule wishes to add or questions or comments from Commissioners?
Thank you, Commissioners. So the fee schedule as presented two weeks ago are still the same changes that are being proposed for 2022.
If there's no other questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion to approve the changes.
I'll make a motion to approve the changes as presented to the fee schedule.
I'll second the motion.
Been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
That motion carries. Thank you. Moving on, again, this was an item that was initially presented to the board two weeks ago, and this would be the economic, excuse me, Lincoln County Community and Economic Development Grant Awards. Executive Director Paul Schumah is here. And again, if there are no questions, Mr. Miller has the awards as they were recommended by the Alliance Board on the screen. And if there are any questions, I'm sure he'll be happy to answer them. Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve the recommendations of the Alliance Board.
Mr. Chair, I'll move for adoption of the funding recommendations from the Alliance Board of Directors.
I will second the motion.
So do we have clarity on which of the large projects we are approving? Now that I kind of ushered us in that direction? I guess I'll like direct, Mr. Schumah, what's your understanding of the large projects?
Um, yeah, thank you very much. And yeah, I was, I'm here only for support and questions. And with the large projects, since it was a, a new wrinkle and program within this grant program, our board was kind of a little hesitant to necessarily make a direct recommendation. But if you combine our, the Eat Out's board scoring and also the scoring of the subject matter experts, the Pioneer Telephone Cooperative comes out significantly on top for that single largest award. So if you just, if you take it as a data-based recommendation, that would be what came from Eat Out. But we wanted to give you guys any opportunity since this was a, a new approach that the Commissioners wanted to take. If there was anything else different you want to do, but based on scoring, the Pioneer Walport Fiber Project was far and away the highest scored of the larger grants.
And if I remember correctly, it was also the, the application or the project that would probably have the broadest impact on the most people.
And leverage the most external and additional funds. So you're 60,000 bucks, you're getting over a half a million dollars worth of investment.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
No. Would you like me to make a, offer a friendly amendment, friendly amendment to Commissioner?
Sure, I would welcome that, Commissioner.
All right. Commissioner Hall, are you all right with the friendly amendment?
Certainly.
All right, I will make a friendly amendment to the motion that we adopt this small project as presented and the Pioneer Telephone Cooperative project as a large project.
A nod from Commissioner Hall, I assume, is a second. So it's been moved and seconded. Any additional discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And again, for the record, the large project that we just selected was the Pioneer Telephone Cooperative. So thank you, Paul. Thank you to your board for the hard work. I know it takes time to go through those applications, but I think the the work that they did reflects the call, the awards that they recommended reflect the quality of the work that they did. So thank you very much. All right, next we'll move on to a second reading. Again, this came before us two weeks ago. Second reading of Ordinance Number 524, establishing local county procedures for processing claims under ORS 195.300 through 195.336 and declaring an emergency. Council Herbage, any additional comments at this time?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, for the record, I'm Jerry Herbage, Assistant County Counsel for Lincoln County. And I think that you're right on. The first reading was on December 15th. What I would tell the board is that there have been no changes to the ordinance or the attachment since the first reading. And as was alluded, I went to, I went over the ordinance in detail on December 15th and and won't do that again. But I, I'm here to answer questions. Procedurally, let's go over that. If the board so desires, you can adopt this ordinance today following public comment, if any, and it would be effective immediately because it declares an emergency. Before I go further, let's see, did we not do this? Can I ask the board, are you okay if it's read by title only?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Jacobson is thumbs up. I think that is a yes.
Okay, so we are talking about establishing the local county procedures for processing claims under ORS 195.300 to 195.336 and declaring an emergency. Just a few other words about the ordinance. Obviously, it consists of the ordinance material itself with an attachment of text, and that text will be made part of the Lincoln County Code. The draft text, I would say, was prepared by Matt Spangler, who was a former Planning and Development Director for Lincoln County, and he worked for DLCD, and is really one of the better planners in the state. And I think the county is very lucky to have him on board. He did the initial draft and for that, we are appreciative. The procedures are not land use. The procedures before you are regulations that are going to be made part of Chapter 7, which is General Administration. So we're not talking about land use regulations or land use decisions being made today. This is not going to be made part of Chapter 1. The text provides the local procedures, like how are we going to process a Measure 49 claim when it comes in? What is the notice like? How will the hearing be handled and so on? And these are all supplemental to the Oregon Revised Statutes in Chapter 195. Does the board have any questions?
Any questions, Commissioners? I have none. None from me.
No questions for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Board. I think what would be appropriate is to see through Casey if we have any people who had wanted to comment on the ordinance, and then I think the board can act on this.
All right, Mr. Miller, I, as I look at the participants, I do not see any that would appear to be here for public comment, but I'll ask for your response or review of the situation, please.
Yes, I don't see anyone as well. Of course, anyone can use the raise hand function. And also, I would add that on our written constituent input, we did not receive anything in regard to this as well.
All right, so last chance, anybody that wishes to make public comment, raise your hand, and we'll recognize you and give you the opportunity to do so. I see no raised hands, so that will conclude the opportunity for public comment. Back to you, Council Herbage.
Thank you, Commissioners. Now you've had two readings on this. We're asking that it be declared an emergency so it can be in place. Whenever anyone has a Measure 49-type claim, they'll be able to go to the code and they'll have a specific procedure for processing. So if you're ready, you can go ahead and take a vote on this if you would like.
I'll entertain a motion.
I will make a motion establishing local county procedures for processing claims under ORS 195 decimal 300 dash 195 decimal 336 and declaring an emergency.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion carries and an emergency was declared, so I assume it's effective now. Moving forward, we have one last decision item, and that would be an order amending order, one amending order 9-21-285 regarding paid COVID-19 leave. And I believe Council Herbage, you're back with us, are still with us.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate it. I'd like to briefly go over the background to this order, amending order 921-285, and I'll be brief. But on September 1st, 2021, this board temporarily amended the personnel rules based upon the current conditions surrounding the COVID-19 pandemic. And if you recall, this time, it was actually one of the worst times of the pandemic. And, and the board has done various things which are appreciated on behalf of the workforce. This was one. And in, in adopting this order, the board in turn adopted a policy called Lincoln County Temporary Policy for Paid COVID-19 Leave. And it was to be effective from September 1, September 1, 2021, until December 31, 2021. So in other words, the order that you adopted on September 1, covering the period September 1 to December 31, is set to expire in a couple of days. Now, the basis of this policy that the board adopted was to provide a safe and healthy workplace for its employees and the public. And so what did the policy do? It really provided for a bank of up to 80 hours of paid leave for employees following, falling into one of four categories. And basically, this had to do with employees affected by COVID in a direct way. I mean, one was employees subject to federal, state, or local quarantines or isolation orders, or if the employee had been advised by a healthcare provider to self-quarantine related to COVID-19, or employees experiencing COVID-19 symptoms and seeking medical diagnosis, or caring for individuals subject to an order under A or B above. So then the policy went on to prescribe the, you know, the process for processing these requests, and includes filling out a form and so on and so forth. Now let's talk about the proposed order that's before you today. That's an order amending order number 921-285 regarding paid COVID leave. Since the adoption of the order in September, the COVID-19 pandemic has obviously continued. And indeed, on December 21, 2021, Governor Kate Brown extended the State of Oregon Declaration of Emergency well into 2022 as the Omicron variant has emerged. So the question is, what would this amendment do? Very simply, it would amend Order Number 921-285 by extending the ending date of the temporary COVID-19 leave policy, and it would do that until March 31, 2022. Now, the original order provided a bank of up to 80 hours of leave. Now that would remain the same. So in other words, by this amendment, the bank is not being increased. And all other provisions of the COVID leave policy would remain the same. So basically, what you're doing, if the board approves this, is you would be extending your COVID leave, temporary COVID leave policy until March 31, 2022. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I thought that was a pretty comprehensive explanation. Thank you. Any questions, Commissioners?
None from me.
All right. And again, the current order expires in three days. So if my fellow Commissioners are agreeable, I'll entertain a motion to approve this amended order today. I would so move.
I would so move.
I will second.
Been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. And again, it's not additional hours in the bank, but it's an additional period of time when people who have not accessed the full 80 hours may be able to do so. All right, next we'll move on to a discussion item, and this would be a resolution establishing aspirational apprenticeship goals for the Lincoln County construction contracts. I believe our guest is Ken Humbertson. And Ken, you're welcome to provide some comments. And if there are any questions from Commissioners, I'm sure you'll be able to answer them. And welcome.
Thank you, Chair Hunt. I appreciate this opportunity. And I'd like to also thank Commissioner Hall for bringing this forward to your agenda. In respect for your time, I have taken all of that information that I have sent you and boiled it down to a few basic talking points or key issues. So I would simply lay those out to you as quickly as possible. Then if you have questions, I'll answer them if I can. And if I cannot, I will get you answers and get them back to your board by the end of the week. So first, let me start that. The whole idea is to promote the idea of of the use of apprentices in public contracting, which is not to suggest that government can do everything. It does not, it does not and cannot. But government can sometimes take the lead. And so this is an opportunity for your government to take the lead in developing your workforce. It it works to develop local job development. It builds your local economy with the people who live in your community. It develops the skill sets that we're going to need in the future in construction projects. We know that there's about 500,000 jobs needed in the trades as journeymen going forward throughout this country. And we have, we are about 10 years behind in developing those jobs. So anything that we can do to move the ball forward is advantageous, both as a national, state, as well as local issue. There is, most importantly, no cost to the county. And I know in our times of tight budget, that's a critical issue. But I want to emphasize that again, there is no cost to the county if you accept or develop this policy. As you saw from the materials that we gave you, that material allows four different options. Those are not written in stone. You can develop them as you see fit. One of the things that we decided on in promoting this policy was not to go to the state because all counties in Oregon are not alike. And the state has a tendency to promote things that are one size fits all. Clearly, what works in Multnomah County or Clackamas County may not work effectively in Lincoln County or Sherman County or Wallaw County. So the idea is to give you a menu to pick from and modify to meet your specific local needs. This is an opportunity for your board to be proactive as opposed to reactive in the development of your workforce, but again, at no cost to you. We do say that we believe that your policies should include the idea that it's all state certified programs that the apprentices come from. Unfortunately, there are some fly-by-night programs out there that are not state certified. We want to make sure that the people that you get on your jobs are highly qualified and being trained appropriately. So we we believe that it should be state certified. It does not have to be union programs. If you have a local community college providing those, this kind of training, as an example, that's perfectly acceptable. You're getting people who are appropriately trained to do this work. And we need people to get this on-the-job training. If your company is locally, or some company that is not local but is bidding on a contract, would like to become certified as a trainer, we can help them do that. There is a process the state has to certify companies for that. And our legal team will give the information to your companies and help them move that ball forward if they want to be certified as a trainer. If you have an equity, diversity, and inclusion program, I can tell you that virtually all the trades are no longer going the direction of if my dad was in the union, I could get in the union, which generally tended to help only mostly white males. Most of the trades today have developed their own equity, diversity, and inclusion programs that are actively recruiting people of color, women, and other minorities into the trades. And so finally, this is your opportunity to develop, to help develop your local economy, your local workforce, and your local businesses in a small way and get the people that live in your community trained for these good, high-paying, family-wage jobs. So I will leave it there and stand for questions.
Questions, Commissioners?
Chair, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. Ken did make initial contact with me, and we've discussed the idea, you know, ran the four sample resolutions by Roy Kenyon, our Public Works Director, and you know, the one that tied things to specific dollar goals on contracts. He pointed out that in the last many, many years, that we've only had one contract that would fall in the specific fiscal targets of the prescriptive resolution. But I asked, and it's in our packet for review today and possible action today or at a later date, the aspirational one, because at this time, it doesn't commit us to specific actions, but yet it does put us on record. And, you know, I talked to Ken about how in the last 17 years, I can remember one really significant capital project we had, and that's the remodel of the Health and Human Services Nye Beach facility. But, you know, in the next few years, we've got several projects on the drawing board or somewhere in the shoot of development. The Emergency Operations Center, the Animal Shelter, the Commons redevelopment, hopefully a new HHS site in Newport, and potentially in a few years, a new courthouse. So I think it would be very the 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 main value I see in this initially is that as we bring those projects to the bit stage, this sends a clear, unambiguous signal to contractors that we support these kind of programs and really want to see them, see them gain a stronger foothold. I thought about the work that you have done, both on our regional and statewide workforce investment board, and it just all seemed to fit together rather nicely for me.
And discussion.
Thank you. Commissioner Jacobson?
Yeah, sorry about that. I'm on phone audio and it takes a minute to unmute. So, yeah, I'm certainly in favor of providing more, you know, of these opportunities where we can. I agree with the aspirational goal. You know, my my one concern is just that a lot of times when we do send out projects for RFPs, we don't typically get a whole lot of response, you know. And I think in our Animal Shelter Project, we just did, we only had, you know, a handful. I think they actually submitted information back to us. And so I just want to make sure that adding additional requirements wouldn't mean that we see less people apply to those opportunities because we're already operating typically with with very small amount of folks that that bid on those contracts.
Yeah, again, the way this is worded is not as a requirement, but kind of a statement of our values and our hopes that contractors will will work to promote and employ apprenticeship programs.
Yeah, yeah, I have, and I'm okay with the wording presented here.
Yeah, I would just add, I I'm certainly, you know, the concept, and as Commissioner Hall already indicated, I serve not only on the Northwest Workforce Investment Board, but the Governor's Workforce Investment Board. So I'm keenly interested in opportunities to provide or train people so that they have skills to earn a better living and enjoy a better life. I guess the question I have, and and I might suggest that this come back to us next year. Don't panic, people. That's in one week. But that would give some time for some additional, I guess, discussion, possible unintended consequences, which I think Commissioner Jacobson alluded to. But certainly, on the surface, it seems to be a valid program. Would would we be agreeable to bringing it back in a week? That is our normal process anyhow.
I'm I'm fine with that. And everybody, yeah, and if any of us have further questions for Mr. Humbertson, we we can make sure you've both got his contact information as well. And yeah, I think perhaps having this as our first resolution of the new year would be, you know, setting a good, positive start to the year.
I'll also thank Mr. Humbertson for his service as a county commissioner in Clackamas County. That's where he and I first became acquainted at AOC. So as Commissioner Hall indicated, I don't know how to find Mr. Humbertson, Commissioner Humbertson. So and I I guess let's see what kind of conversation we have in the next week and whether or not we'll require your attendance next week. We'll let you know, Ken. But appreciate you're being present. Again, I think it's certainly a type of program that leaders would want to embrace. And I think with some additional time for discussion, that would be the outcome.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
You may.
Well, I would very, I very much so like to be present when you have your final discussions on this because I would like to just be present, see your vote on it.
Sure.
Means a lot to me personally. As a graduate apprentice myself, I know how important this can be. And the my final comment is I wanted to commend your board in general for your broadband initiative. So I spoke to you earlier before the meeting started. I had a difficult time with that issue in our county, getting that third vote to 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 move that ball forward here. So you should be proud of yourselves and what you're trying to do with that broadband initiative. That is the kind of forward thinking that all county commissions need to be doing. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments, and thank you for your initiative in the area of workforce development. That's a critical part and a great need within our state and our county. So you're welcome to join us in a week, and thank you for your time here today. Any other comments? All right. Thank you. And we'll see you in a week. Next year.
See you next year.
Thank you. And again, we'll have this item on the agenda for our first meeting in January. All right, we'll move on. This is the last Board of Commissioners meeting of the month, and we now have our Echo Mountain Fire updates at that last meeting monthly. So Commissioner Jacobson, Mr. Miller, what's the latest?
Yeah, I'll start, and Casey can fill in as I go, if you're all right with that, Casey. So here's some some projects we've talked about last month and, you know, where we're at currently. So we are moving forward with the engineering study on all of the roads in the wildfire impacted area. We are using some business organ reimbursement dollars that we received a while ago to do that study. In addition, I think we're in the very final stages of getting an approved contract with ODOT for $500,000 through their lawnmower fund. And that is when you buy gas and it goes into a gas can, not your car. Gas tax goes into a separate fund called lawnmower fund. And so we received or are receiving $500,000 from that fund for repair of roads in the wildfire affected area. I know Director Kenyon has worked really hard on that, including making sure we could use that money for destroyed culverts, because we've got a lot of culverts that just haven't stood up very well to have the equipment and stuff in there. So that's where we're at on roads. In the last legislative sessions, in the Christmas tree bill, we had $15 million that was passed for fire recovery efforts. And trying to move that money forward, we ran into several issues with the bill title and the language within it, one of which being that the bill title did not say water. It said stormwater and septic, but not the word water. And so the state was not letting us actually move forward with a $9 million drinking water project that was included in that 15 million. So we are working very closely with the state and with Representative Gomber, who is introducing a bill language change in this session, which would take that $15 million bill, rip it apart into two different packages and add the word water so that we can actually use that money for what it's intended for. So a little delay on that, but I think the ultimately, it'll be a good change and actually allow some of the money to go directly to Panther Creek Water District and the money for our septic and stormwater program to come to us. So delay, but I think it will be good ultimately. My understanding is the RFP for Fixed Income Survivor Housing, which the Lincoln County Housing Authority is taking the lead on. I think they're planning on awarding that by the end of the year or very early on. So they are very close to doing that to move forward. And the state is also looking at Tiny Home Village, and I believe they are narrowing in on some space, both that a church owns and adjoining space that the city owns as well to develop that on. And then the last thing I'll say is that there is some state programming coming through for survivors for what they're calling fire hardening grants. So as you rebuild your home, there's an opportunity to get some increased funding to do fire hardening things on your home to make sure it's more robust, you know, for fire in the future. I will say that I think this is one of those programs that's well-intended, but late. Because we have many homes in Otis already back and many other homes, manufactured homes that have already been ordered. However, my understanding is even if you already have ordered your manufactured home or your manufactured home is already back in place and you are living on it, you still can apply for fire hardening grants for kind of aftermarket add-ons, like better skirting around your manufactured home and a better deck and that sort of thing that are more fire hardened. So it's still potentially something that our survivors would be eligible for in the future. And that's all the updates I have from my end. And Casey, feel free to add on.
Yeah. Yes, thank you. One of the things coming in on the horizon is the pro bono project. We will be engaging with the Community Assistance Planning Program, the Oregon Association of Planners. That'll help us bring stakeholders to the table, recovery stakeholders, and help us get a feel for where we're at if we're still aligned as a community in meeting the goals for everyone as we, you know, inch our way through recovery. Jeff Gilbert, Department of Human Services, did send us some stats on December 3. And we still have two hotels in Lincoln, 44 rooms, and 87 survivors in those rooms. So, you know, it really does remind you, we still have a lot of work to do to get, you know, our community restored. And, you know, it is a process that is moving along slower than maybe we would like it to be. But this stakeholder meeting will really help us, you know, take a snapshot of where we're at and how we are doing. Of course, our internal team still meets. And we just want to make sure we're all moving forward and where we can help. Obviously, you see all the kinds of things Katie's engaged in. We're doing the best that we can and aware of everything that's going on. So. So that's, that's really the end of my report for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, comments? I guess I would say that I appreciate the updates. Clearly, as has already been said, there's a lot of work yet to be done. We might wish that it was happening more quickly, but it is happening. And the people that will really benefit from these activities and funding sources need to, to realize that we continue to work for the best benefit for them. So appreciate the updates. It's a slow process, but it's a process that is moving forward. Any other comments? I think Commissioner, Commissioner Jacobson blanked. I've been having, I've been having trouble with my computer here and people are freezing. And I was afraid for a moment there, I was gonna have to disconnect and come back. But keep our fingers crossed for the moment that we're working. So appreciate that. Update next on our agenda would be a COVID report. And I see Director Romero here. I assume that Florence Bartel is enjoying some time away. And welcome, Director Romero.
Thank you so much. Good morning, commissioners. Yes, Florence is indeed away on a very well-earned vacation. And I would like to maybe just give a shout out to our epidemiologist, Callie Limandola Gilliam, who prepares the slides that you see each week. So anyway, with that, I'll just jump right in. So Omicron has been detected in Oregon. And of, as of this morning, we have two confirmed cases of Omicron in Lincoln County. I think we all know it's now the dominant strain in the United States. I read this morning that last week, the country had over a quarter million confirmed cases, the majority of which are Omicron. So here's what we know so far about the variant. We know it is more transmissible than Delta, but we don't yet know how much more transmissible it is. We believe that the disease severity may be less than with Delta. But again, this remains under study, and so we are just not sure at this time. But it does appear that the vaccines do prevent the more severe reaction in terms of disease severity, hospitalization and death. And this is even more so the case for folks who have a booster. The, it is unknown at this time if the treatment regimens that, that have been successful in combating the previous variants will work against Omicron. Again, this is under investigation. And I can share that the Oregon Health Authority is expecting to see a surge in cases in Oregon towards the end of the month as Omicron spreads. And while even if it's not as severe, I think the fear is that because it is so much more transmissible, that the hospitals will become overwhelmed. I had sat in on a conference the other day and learned that the peak hospitalization numbers in Oregon were 1,200 during the Delta surge back in August. They're predicting it could be as many as 3,000 with Omicron. So that, that's a huge concern and everybody's looking at that. So we do know that Omicron is able to break through the vaccines. And as I said, though, having the vaccines does appear to prevent more severe disease. And again, the booster does tend to bring the vaccine efficacy up to, close to the original immunity that folks got when they got their first two doses. So as a result, the CDC and the Oregon Health Authority is recommending that everyone who is eligible receive a booster shot. And of course, then that becomes our recommendation too. Just a couple of other highlights. We will be resuming or going back to more of an outreach and mobile clinic model of vaccination response in January. And, and that information is on our website and towards the end of our slide deck here. And FEMA mobile vaccination unit will be coming back to our county. It's tentatively going to be here starting January 6th, and it'll be at the fairgrounds, but we have a planning meeting later today. So I think at our next update, we'll be able to give you more concrete information. And I think Florence has mentioned before that we are able to take, test the wastewater in, in our county, and I think particularly in Newport. And we are able to see that the COVID cases here are likely underreported. But I'll go into that a little more just with, in a few future slides. So Casey, could you do the next slide? So as you can see, in Oregon, we were seeing a downward trend. There's starting to be an uptick. And of course, we're going to watch that closely to see if we do get that surge. The Oregon Health Authority is predicting. And then we don't have any current hospitalizations in either of our hospitals with anybody who has COVID. So what, why don't we just go to slide number seven? So our Epi curve has been trending down. In December through the 27th, we recorded 205 positive cases. Our, our test positivity rate is 4.9%. So under 5% is good. However, as I said a few minutes ago, our wastewater testing suggests that our, our case rate is actually probably a little higher. So next slide, please. And as of the week of December 19th, we had 42 cases. We are trending down again. We're gonna have to wait and see what happens with Omicron. And I think maybe there's just one more slide, Casey, if you could load that. Oh, no, there's two more. So this is our vaccination rate, and I think we really need to be proud of this. If you look at the, the top block, you can see that, that really, we're, we're doing a good job here in Lincoln County. Eighty-three percent of our population has received at least one dose of a vaccine. As you go a little further down, you can see the, the percent ranges of those who have completed to the two dose series. And the, the third tier there reflects those who have received the extra dose or a booster. So again, let's see, next slide, Casey. These are our upcoming vaccination clinics. And this, of course, is on our website. And as soon as we have more information about the FEMA mobile vaccination unit, we will add it to the website. And of course, we'll have this here for you next week. And then finally, final slide. As we always like to, to say, we recommend that folks get vaccinated. Please get a booster if you're eligible. It will absolutely help protect you against the Omicron variant. Wear a mask in public settings. Limit your social gatherings. If you're sick, stay home. Get tested if you are sick. And let me just add that we are aware that the CDC has recently updated their isolation and quarantine recommendations. The OHA is meeting literally as, as we speak to talk more about that. Until we have formal guidance from the Oregon Health Authority, we will continue to follow the current guidance with regard to isolation and quarantines. So that's it in a nutshell. Any questions?
Questions or comments, commissioners?
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Hall.
Thank you. Good morning, Jane. I just wondered if we could hear from you in, in a little bit more detail on the hospitalization forecast? Because I know the initial projections from OHSU were really kind of alarming. But I know a few, a day or two ago, I believe, they put out a revised news release essentially saying that, yeah, we're gonna see an upsurge in, in positive cases, but that the hospitalizations, well, they're still gonna surge, but it's not gonna be quite as bad as in their initial forecast.
It, I have not seen a more recent update than the conference that I sat in on the other day, which was predicting the 3,000, although they were suggesting that if folks who have completed the vaccination series get a booster, that they thought it might come down to about 2,000. So that's the latest information that, that I've received.
Okay, I'll send you this link.
I appreciate that, yeah.
Just appreciate it if you have any thoughts. But the theme of the article seems to be, yeah, you know, this is something serious that we definitely need to prepare for, but maybe not.
Yeah, and you know, it's sort of interesting because there's, there are so many articles out there from so many sources. So I, you know, I try to read them and, and then of course, remember that our, our guidance has to come from the Oregon Health Authority, and, and so we follow that. But I think what they are all saying is that the booster does add that extra layer of protection. And of course, everything that we know works is what we need to keep doing for now.
Exactly.
Yeah.
All right.
No, there's no question.
I lost internet connectivity there for a minute. So if I vanished, I'm back. But if there are no more questions, thank you, Director Romero. As usual, it's informative update, it's comprehensive, and it's difficult to look into the future. But certainly there are some areas that we're watching and want to be cautious about. So thank you.
Thank you, and Happy New Year to all of you.
And to you too. So, thank you. All right. I, next item on our agenda would be Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Hall?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have anything that hasn't already been discussed today. So thank you and Happy New Year, everybody.
Happy New Year. Commissioner Jacobs?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I think a few meetings ago, kind of pre-holiday, I kind of talked about what was happening with offshore wind. And just wanted to let everyone know that we are restarting our fishermen involved in Natural Energy Committee. They haven't met in over a year. So restarting that group, and I'm getting my calendar to tell you when it's happening. So the fine meeting is January 25th at 7:00 PM. So it likely will be in a virtual format.
All right, that actually is a good segue for one of my comments. I believe today is former Commissioner Terry Thompson's birthday. So we will wish him a happy birthday. And of course, he was an integral part of Fine, the Fine Committee. It was a Fine Committee, the Fine Committee. And again, happy. Go ahead.
I was gonna say, actually, today is my son's 11th birthday. And I did not realize that Commissioner Thompson and him were birthday buddies. So that's pretty.
Oh, yeah. Well, Commissioner Thompson, I don't think he liked to make a big deal of his birthday, but I made note of it one time in, when I overheard a conversation. So happy birthday to both. And I also will take a moment to wish everyone, I hope everyone had a joyous Christmas with family and friends. And this is the last meeting of the year 2021. And I will take this opportunity to wish everyone a Happy New Year and a healthy and prosperous year in 2022. So with that, we'll move on to public comment. Mr. Miller, any public comments since we last took a, or gave the opportunity for public comment under the prior agenda item?
Yes. Well, Chair, we do not appear to have anybody new that's enjoying, or joined us virtually anyways. But if you're there, use that raise hand function in case we're missing you. And maybe while we're waiting for that, I will take you to the website so we can see what's going on online. And so that's not constituent input, that's that offshore wind energy engagement. But this is our public input. We received one written item thanking the commissioners there and supporting documents. And then if you look at our smart sheet, it just really is a mirror of what we've received. We only post the items for the week on the website. But this, of course, is our history going back in time. So just one item written, and yeah, Chair, it appears that we do not have anyone with live comments.
All right, if there are no public comments, we'll move on. And if, is there any other business to come before the board this year? There being none, the next meeting of the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners will be next year, Wednesday, January 5th at 10:00 AM. It will be a virtual meeting. And until then, Happy New Year, everyone, and we are adjourned.